My name is Keith Frimano. I'd like to follow this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetlands Commission for Kyle Harrow. It is October 11th and the time is 7:06 PM. Everyone, please stand to recite the Pledge of Leading. Pledge of Leading is to be the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will take roll call of the members of the Commission's staff present during tonight's hybrid meeting. Cheryl, is there anybody online that looks blank?
I know our engineer is not joining us tonight.
What about Sarah?
I think that's her.
Yes, Sarah, gotcha. All right, I'll take roll call of members of the Commission's staff present during tonight's hybrid meeting. Please answer here or present, Sarah and myself, Keith Frimano, Chairman, Eric Lindstrom. Here. Here. Ryan Kelly, Secretary, is not with us. Rick Smith, to my left. Here. Jim Stewart, who is a licensed surveyor and engineer in state of Connecticut. Here. Dylan Willett, our planning and zoning commissioner. Here. Cheryl Ballard, your planning and zoning and inland wetlands enforcement officer.
Here.
Chris Stroud, recording secretary.
Here.
Thank you. Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. Inland Wetlands Mission Statement. The objective and purpose of the Inland Wetlands Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses within the town of Monroe. Meeting Procedure. Please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment, in compliance with State Law, Public Act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with State law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title applicable at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of the body or participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat feature will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. Protocol for public hearings to have an applicant make a presentation to the Commission during which and after which the Commission will be asking the applicant questions. I ask the applicants, keep their presentations as concise as possible. The Commission will then review town, staff, and independent comments. We will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments made to the Chair or Commission. After any and all comments pro and opposition over general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct, or a timeline of three minutes may be imposed. It is not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new material is entered in as evidence or testimony during the response. Please keep all comments pro and con, specifically inland wetlands related matters. Other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow a similar format, with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. Meeting follows our published agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm adding three items to the agenda under Article F, General Discussion Decisions and Other. The first one would be 1271 Monroe Turnpike. Number two would be 58 Hannah Lane. And number three would be consideration for approval of the 2024 meeting schedule.
Yes, thank you. All right, this is the general public participation part of the meeting. This is for anybody in the public, either online or for President Chambers that wants to address the Commission for any item related to wetlands matters that is not before us currently or to be before us in the near future. All right, application determinations none, subdivision report recommendations none. Deliberation session. Deliberation on completed hearings, complete items from this agenda is determined by the Commission. IWC 20-03. I'm recusing myself on this one, so go ahead. I'll see you when you're done. All right, so this is IWC 2023-03. Number 1439, 139, 141, and 201, Turkey Roost Road and 30 Collers Hill. Proposed construction of 99 single-family detached dwellings served by community wastewater treatment system with proposed regulated activities in the upland review. Corey Ridge, Associate to LLC, owner applicant. Jay Edwards, an Associate to LLC, Representative. All right, this was opened back in like June 28th. Okay. When last we met, we were drafting a resolution based on all the comments and we have that in front of us.
That's right. The most updated version is right before you. It's dated October 11th for staff report with a draft resolution. Any changes, comments?
It's a good draft, good revisions, everything's good. The only thing I would suggest is with regard to the environmentally friendly management plan and turf management plan, specifically, I guess, the environmental friendly landscape management plan. It's not a condition, but a good competent program manager, project manager, will make sure that this aligns with everything we've discussed. So I would look for you guys to edit it before it's given to anyone. Better to edit it now than later. Specifically, because I'm cognizant of the increasing mosquito population and the mosquito borne illnesses associated with it that are growing and concern for Connecticut residents. The bat houses should be discussed in here. You told us you'd put them up and I appreciate that. And I think the residents will too. Then with regard to the chemical applications, the pesticides, herbicides, make sure it talks about the fact that there will be no herbicides or pesticides used within the 100, the upper review area. So any good program and project management, make sure that all documentation matches. And I would expect that from you. So, thank you.
I want to make sure I understood. So you want to just amend this slightly to have a few more specific details in it?
Well, I'd like it to be correct. And I think that the bat houses is one and the...
Because with the lack of suppression, bat houses were on the plan.
Yeah, I know, but it doesn't say anything in here. And it does address environmental friendly, enhance wildlife. If you're going to say enhancing wildlife habitat for desirable and native species...
I just want to follow where you are.
B, A9. And then E, well, Section E should talk about the invasive species control. I think you understand what I'm saying.
I do.
Which is very minor, otherwise I wouldn't even mention it, but I'm just saying it. You know, you gave it to us and from your viewpoint, we accepted it. But I want what we've discussed, the revisions. Thank you. I have no other concerns.
Okay, right, but we were...
That's just, I'm just making our quest that affects my vote with regard to the...
Well, I was just gonna say, is there a way we can get that amended? Obviously, I'm not gonna amend it at the moment, but...
Yeah, you should just put in whatever language you want, right now.
It does talk about the plan in here, doesn't it? Says that copies, well...
So in F3, copies of final plans to be submitted to inland wetlands department will include the turtle clocking signs, curb changes as to pick in Exhibit 20, snow storage areas located outside of the 100-foot upland review area, eternal habitat, as well as changes to the outlet structure and creation of bat houses in Exhibit 17. So the plans will be revised. We do have an exhibit on file that they submitted that's becoming part of a condition of approval to add those bat houses in.
Mm-hmm. So does that cover your, is that one of those?
It says here, environmental friendly management plan and turf management plan are conditions of this approval.
Right.
Except that all invasive. So it mentions it, but I'm just saying, I like it if this goes through and it's given to the agency, homeowners association, to carry this out and landscapers, professional landscapers to carry this out. It's not comprehensive. It doesn't completely agree, right? If this alone is given to them, it's not enough. They have to have the other plans.
Saying here, we have to agree to, the only way this becomes approved is if she agrees to it and that the conditions are met. So I don't know that we need to line all the specific details in this draft resolution.
The thing that you can make a condition of is that that management plan be revised to add in everything, no herbicides in 100-foot upland review area, which is also a condition of approval already. It's already... And in the HOA language agreement, it prohibits homeowners from independently applying pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers by themselves.
I've done...
But you could just say as a condition of approval that you wanted that amended. Because they're going to amend their plan anyway to add those other things in. They can amend this to add in the information about the bat houses. No herbicides, pesticides allowed in 100-foot upland review area. And then invasion species, just as written here. They could amend, they could revise that plan as a condition of approval to be submitted when they submit their revised plans, if you'd like. Makes sense.
I'm okay with it. Are you?
I'm okay with that. I just, I wanted to point it out that everything, look, I was a project manager for million dollar projects. It's really important that everybody's on the same sheet.
Yeah.
So I want everything to say the same or indicate the same thing. Well, it didn't say anything about a bat house in here. It didn't say anything about, so I just want, I'm just asking them to make sure that it goes no far. This is not an official, it's an official document in that it's a, it was an exhibit for this and under our consideration, we gave you our results, we discussed it. Now, if you could just revise it, I have no problems. I'm not asking for any changes in this. I'm just asking for a good faith...
I made it a condition of approval, so as letter D.
Right.
Submission to revise environmental family management plan. Add in those three things that we just spoke about.
Okay, that's great.
Okay.
Okay. I'm okay with that, if you're okay with, you okay with that? Anything else you want to add to it?
Okay, so motion to approve application IWC 2023-03. 139, 141, 201, Turkey Roost Road, 30 Collers Hill, Port Corey Ridge Associates as drafted and amended by staff.
Second?
And I'm, or, oh, you want me to, sorry, sorry. Okay, that's right, sorry, I need to be second, I'm sorry, second, yes.
Okay. So we need to vote?
Yes, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anamis? Okay. You go on that?
Can I go bring back in...
Yeah, we can. Oh, there he is. Public hearings, none. Bond release, none. IWC agent activity reports.
So there's two things under enforcement, Mr. Chairman. The first one is 1381 Monroe Turnpike. It was before you, a couple months ago, because a gentleman there was clearing around a watercourse, a pond up near 111. He complied with what you asked for. The area has grown back nicely, no issues with staff. But I wanted to just inform you that you probably are going to be seeing it pretty soon because property is up for sale and a lot of people are looking to either subdivide or turn it into farmland. I just wanted to alert you to that, so you can get, you know, thinking about, you know, what you'd like to see and comments you might have for prospective buyers. So that's, I'll head with that. 472 Pepper Street, there was a condition based on a cease and desist. They had a permit to work in the back of the property near wetlands and watercourses. And when they were starting to do work, they hadn't put their silt fences incorrectly or had put them in incorrectly and in the wrong places. And the Commission asked them to pull back and do a planting plan in one area and then pull out the other area and then put a conservation seed mix in and put a silt fence in, and they complied with that. I inspected it earlier this week, so I just want to let you know they complied with that. Condition of cease and desist.
Excellent, so now we'll get those added things to the agenda?
Okay, so I just handed out to you tonight a packet for 1271 Monroe Turnpike. And there was a permit issued by this Commission a few years ago and they came in for a modification when that was approved. And now they're back for another modification and they're also transferring the permit. So we got that formally in writing and I wanted to let the Commission know that the permit is being transferred.
Thanks for the screen for paper.
Screen?
Yeah.
Okay.
This property is, it's across the street from firehouse, I forget which firehouse. 111, Imito Condos is next door, this sits in front of it and across from the firehouses, right there. We were in here in 2001 and got approval for this layout. Eight restricted housing condos, similar to what's been built over on Collers Farm and Pretty Hill Road. This is what we had been within 2021. That line is the view limit. The blue lines are the LOD that was approved. This layout, we had 27 homes, picture of attached units attached. I had a previous area. You know, there was considerable amount of impervious area on this and we had overall just more impact, most impact of all of our proposals. We put forth in 2022, the property, the contract purchaser that wanted to change the layout. We came in with, and this was actually, I believe that this was an administrative approval at the time. Our LOD remained the same and the overall footwork, the roadway, really, any of the directs or closest wetland impacts hadn't changed. So we were allowed to proceed to, proceed with an administrative change to that permanent approval and run the P&amp;Z and got our P&amp;Z approval with this plan. So this is 19 homes and less impervious area than what was approved in the 2021 plan. And overall, lesser impact as far as the, I really would expect there is.
That was maybe eight feet away?
Can't speak. Please, you're not supposed to speak while he's presenting to us. Thank you. It's not, this is also not a public, this is also not a public hearing. So you actually have nothing to say tonight on this. You could have spoke earlier, but you didn't.
Yeah, right.
This is, this is not a public hearing. These people from the public do not get a chance to talk to us on this. Understood?
We'll be coming back in with an application. So just again, this is the, the new owner or contract purchaser, they're scheduled to close very soon. They're going to be proceeding ahead with the approved plan that we have now. Everything from here, from the street to the wetlands, the rear of the property is to stay the same in this plan as to what was approved. They're going to be going back into zoning to get some tax amendments, or not tax amendment, to reduce the spacing required between these units, so they pick up another three units back here. So, well, I guess I'm here to kind of see what your opinions are and if you'd like us to come back into the full application to review this again or if you're comfortable with administrative review. Again, this is less impervious area and same limit disturbance as what was approved. And we have a study open for, knowing for modification of that SEP. So, you know, town engineer would do a full review at that point. And, you know, public hearing. People are happy to proceed either way, just wanting to get some direction.
Are the additional homes shown on this?
They're on the latest, yeah.
Okay, so this is what, so this is 2010. Okay.
It's proved.
Administratively and then...
Administrative approval.
Has it changed?
So the front, that one needs to change because we have more...
Okay, and then you want to change it again?
Yeah.
To this?
To this, correct. So the, the changes aren't in that rear portion only.
These homes are...
Down here. Yeah, they're down here, really, it's up here is where we add, where the pressure changes back here.
You're putting septic in the setback area?
Those are where they've been.
Versus where they, where were they there?
Right here.
They're still in the septic?
Green LOD hasn't changed from, that was the same that it's been.
Less great. So they want to get away from the...
They don't want the attached units, they want detached, but they're trying to squeeze a couple more units in there if they can.
This is the new one on the top.
Last one, the dates are on the top in blue. So you have 2021, that's what you guys approved.
Oh, this is going to this one.
They're going, this one, 2023, done back. This is what they're going to.
Well, I got it backwards.
Yeah, I should have assembled it. This is what they're going for now.
2024 versus 1920.
No, I get it.
I mean, in the front, you're putting, compared to what was originally proposed, you're putting three houses all in the setback area.
We had a couple buildings up there in the first one.
And then the first one, you only had, you only had, whatever, half a building or one, one unit.
The problem is that the 2022 plan was...
Unit and a quarter.
The problem that I have is that the 2022 plan has the same thing.
Yeah, so that one's already approved.
What's different between 2021, I'm sorry, 2023 and 2023 plan?
Only the rear, nothing in the front.
And sewage at a corner there. Field here. Is this, what's along here?
Those are septic systems.
Is that new?
No. Go to 2022, it's the same.
Just one more septic, one more septic.
Oh, right, so just one more, that's all?
One more septic in the URA.
One more, you said?
Well, there's another house.
Yes. There's another, there's another septic in the URA.
Okay.
On the north, on the north end.
I didn't even realize that.
Now, levels of pervious area is...
It's reduced from the original, but the bigger buildings.
So it's reduced from this, but increased from that?
It's a slight increase from that, yeah. Training systems are all still, obviously.
And they're all still working?
Yeah, everything's, it's going to be reviewed by James. I have through planning and zoning.
These are, all this, all these deep holes and perks have been done?
Yeah. There's a chance we may have to do more if, you know, if help wants more.
This is all undisturbed? This was, all this property was undisturbed?
There was a hole there, you know, for many...
Not like some of the other challenges we did.
So what are we being asked, whether it's going to be an administrative decision or not?
Whether you'd like to see it formally come forward, the Commission as an amendment to the permit, modification to the permit or a staff administrative staff field change?
Do your recommendation.
I really, I don't really have one. I would just say in the, I mean, they're increasing the units on the property. In the upland review area, which is more your purview, is the extra septic, I guess, gallery going in. I did discuss it briefly with the town engineer. He's going to review it for zoning purposes, but he said for water quality particularly, he doesn't see any issues at this point. That's all I really can say. It's really up to you, up to the Commission if they want to see it, come back.
I wanted to know if we said we'll do an administrative approval, whether they would have an issue with that.
I really...
It would thrust something on them if they weren't comfortable with it.
I'm comfortable if you're comfortable, I don't, you know, I...
I'm not comfortable that the last one was...
Administrative.
Yeah.
Right. I think this needs to go through us, even if it's very complicated.
Sounds good, okay.
Regular, regular. Thank you. With a permit change, what does that go regular?
Regular?
I told them.
Wait, I got one more question. Historically, we're saying that 2021 is what came to us.
That's what you guys saw, yeah. And I don't know if the, the town staff may have brought it before you in 2022, but we didn't do any presentation to you.
Or was it public or was it, was it regular meeting?
It was, 2021 was a, 2022 was no public hearing to my knowledge. So a public hearing for zoning at that time.
Well, you gotta do, you gotta do public.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Keep in mind that they are going to be starting work under the current condition. We're going in for a location while they're in construction, so you're going to see work out there. I just want to make sure you guys know that they're in compliance with the permit.
When are they started?
We're going to be in touch.
Okay.
Maybe we can get back in use, that's all.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, let's just do it.
Okay.
I'll be coming back in with an application, that was just part of an application request.
It's not a determination, it's not a determination. This is not a determination. Okay, what's next?
58 Hannah Lane, this is just an informal discussion. Owners came in to put in a pool and it, the Commission had said a while back, as far as agent approvals go, that they would like to see anything at least within 25 feet. This is right there, so. Kind of find a copy of it. Yep, you all have, you all have a copy of it. It's 11 by 17, it's a shot of the backyard. And to the pool itself, there's 34 feet to the wetland. There is a paver patio about five feet wide going around it. But the limit of disturbance is around 21 feet. So I just wanted to make sure you were okay with me issuing an agent approval. They would have silt fences put in. I'd have them put inland wetland markers in as well. It's, the contours are pretty flat, so.
It's all grass now?
It's grass.
Even in the wetland?
Oh, the wetland, the wetland might have some, have some, you know, plantings and things like that that are there, I think.
They're not clearing any more area?
Oh, they're not, but that's the thing, I want to, I would, the limit of disturbance is about 21 feet. I would have them put silt fence in about five feet from where the pavers are going to keep everything out of the wetland area. I could have them put plantings in and do a bond if you want, however you'd like to see it, unless you want to see it come before the Commission as a permit, an application.
The well in grass, is grass, the well is like, is it in the wet?
It's in the wetland, yeah.
Is it grass around it?
I think it's pretty grassy. There might be, it might be a little overgrown, but it's grassy, yeah.
Okay.
It's not like a high quality, you know, diverse species wetland, you know, kind of area, but it's, it is a wetland and needs to be looked at and protected, either way.
How far is the pavers from the wet, from the wetland? You don't, you don't have that.
29 feet.
29 feet, because she said this was five feet. It's a five, so before, okay, so 29.
28.
And they have to grade, is there, is it going to be above? Is it going, is that patio going to be graded?
I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be flush, yeah.
They're not going to change, from 29 feet to the wetlands, they're not going to change.
You're just going to work in that area and restore it with their stuff.
Right.
And they have to have access, which is a little tricky, but...
Yeah.
They probably can still get... Where's the driveway?
The driveway's here.
It's on the right.
The driveway's going to be...
We're going to access the other side, right?
This is their garage, I got you, okay. Right, so I don't know if they're going to go around that way. I don't know how much...
Do you know how much of a stonewall, like what's the elevation difference between here and here is?
I don't, I don't have that information.
I'm more concerned about access.
Like, I don't want them to do this, because then they're driving through the wetland.
Yeah, he's got to keep all activities 25 feet away.
Okay.
Even access.
So even, so all access, all activity 25 feet? And you're good?
Yep.
Yeah.
So that means he can't come through or destroy those stone walls.
Or he has to go over a stone wall.
Or he can come around this house, or he can come around the other side of the house. That's fine. Doesn't matter to us as long as he stays.
Okay. Okay. I will relay that information. Got it. Okay.
I think you want them to bring all the equipment through there.
What's next?
I would say minutes, bylaws.
I thought there was three things you added. Did we already go?
The last, well, I mean, we can do that now if you'd like. I was going to put that at the end, but the approval of the 2024 meeting schedule, that's also in that packet that I handed out tonight.
Let's just see, did anybody, did anybody prepare the minutes?
I'm not here.
No, I could do the minutes.
No minutes, okay.
And then.
Did you want to discuss the bylaws before you discussed the, the meeting schedule for the next year?
Yeah, let's do bylaws first.
So I've handed out the bylaws. I've also handed out a copy of the minutes from December 8th of 2021, when the commission kind of changed their policy and gave themselves that kind of leeway to cancel that second meeting. So. We have these minutes here in 12821. At the very bottom, it says, the commission discussed the process of canceling scheduled meetings versus the process of noticing special meetings. The commission determined canceling scheduled meetings ahead significantly light agendas would be the best option. The commission discussed using the second meeting date of each month for continuations of open hearings only. Staff will reach out to necessary engineering firms to inform them of the new procedure. And then you guys made a motion to approve your 2020, 22, 2022 meeting schedule. So you already kind of have a policy that, you know, applicants know about, engineering companies know about. So if you wanted to amend the bylaws, you can do that under section eight. The bylaws. And you can do that by a two thirds vote of the commission's entire voting membership only after the proposed changes, a change has been read and discussed at a previous regular meeting. Except that the bylaws may be changed at any meeting by the unanimous vote of the commission's entire voting membership. So.
What section eight would it be?
Section eight. It's meetings?
Yeah, it is meetings, but there's 81 to 811.
I think it's 81.
Oh, yeah.
Might want to, you know, add, add some, some verbiage in that, in there. Held the second and fourth Wednesday of each month at 7:00 PM. You know.
So with that, that, so basically this is going to like codify our, what we're doing now, meaning putting it in this, so it's.
Normally add it to your bylaws.
Adding it.
Right.
We all understand what that is, right? We run through it again. So it's what we're doing right now. So we have our first meeting of the month is the regular scheduled meeting, right? For all new business, all the stuff that we have on this agenda here. And the second meeting. Let's use that for an example. You just shoot, you just. Right. The second meeting of the month is if we have so much business on the first meeting of the month, that we need more time to finish, or something is going to close, we're going to have timeout on something. It's kind of like auxiliary in case we need it, but we're not going to have anybody come in and have like open a, open a hearing. No new business, no new.
Okay.
And we can decide the first meeting of every month, whether we need. If we all, yeah. And we all, but the other all, the other thing could be four also. Yeah, let's just say it's usually July and August. Okay, but let's say for whatever reason, like we know, or a bunch of people know they're not going to be able to make the April 10th meeting, right? We have enough to have a thing. We can go to the second meeting and run the regular meeting on the second one of the month if we're not going to have a quorum on the first one for some random reason.
Use the second date.
Second date of that month.
Primary one, right.
Yeah, we don't have the first one. We canceled the first one because we don't have a quorum, because too many people are gone, you know, out here.
Right.
And the second one becomes.
Yeah.
The meeting. So that's again what it's for.
Okay. So I would say that, so section 19 talks about how you amend them. You could do it tonight if you had anyone here, you could do it unanimously. But since you don't, amended by two thirds vote only after the proposed change has been read and discussed at a previous regular meeting. So I could draft the language, send it out in your next packet, and you could.
Read and discuss.
Read and discuss.
Yeah. And then we could vote on it.
The next.
Right, with, you know, with two thirds, with two thirds.
We have everybody.
You can't vote on the next meeting?
Now, if everybody's here, we can.
Here we can.
I mean.
No, they said, we're discussing it now.
There's two ways. The first way is the bylaws can be amended by a two thirds vote of the commission's entire voting membership only after the proposed change has been read and discussed at a previous meeting.
Oh, the change, so we're not reading the change.
So you're not really reading it now? You're not writing it? Yeah.
We'll get it in January, in December.
Now, another, another issue right now, and there was a discussion some time ago about, about election of officers and the fact that the bylaw was sitting every two years and something else said every year.
There's a discrepancy in there about that? Okay.
Yeah, DJ brought that up.
There was an issue with that.
I think ours said every year.
Election office.
Ours says every other.
The first meeting in December directly following the biannual, oh, wait a second.
December, directly following a biannual municipal election shall be.
So that's every two years. And I thought that something else said every year.
I think.
That the, the ordinances or the charter or something said every year.
Right, BJ brought that up.
Okay.
Biannual, I mean, every two years or two years? Maybe. We had an election.
Right.
Really?
There was a, I think there was a discrepancy between general town, like charter said, versus our specific bylaws.
Yeah, because it says following the biannual municipal, but we had an election last year, didn't we? For something?
I don't think so.
No?
This is it, right? Coming up.
Yeah, every two years we have the election for first election. Is that what?
I don't know why. He's the one who actually found out and then we found out that it wasn't correct. We could have.
Look, if you would look at, look at the charter, at the ordinances, whatever it is, and.
Okay.
And make it, I assume whatever the ordinance says, I mean.
Right.
Follow the ordinance.
Yeah, there might have been a problem with our bylaws maybe?
I think it was our bylaws were incorrect.
Right. So we got to check on that.
I'll, I'll take a look. I got a note on it.
I think ours.
And we can read that next meeting.
Right. Yeah, good, good, good memory on that one.
Okay.
Now, we'll talk about the meeting schedule.
Oh, I would just mention the invasive species. I, I reached out to the gentleman, he's coming back with dates. So.
Coming back what?
With dates, that he's available.
Great.
Okay, sorry about that. Go ahead. Meetings. Do you have the list?
12th, second.
Oh, it's the second Tuesday.
Yeah.
Wednesday.
I'm going to say this every, I say this every year, so I'm going to keep saying it till you guys finally give up. Does anyone want to hold the meetings at 6 o'clock instead of 7? Give us an extra hour. So much fun.
You don't need an extra hour anymore, but.
Well, get out an hour earlier then.
No, I agree. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that. What happened? Is there an issue with you guys for that?
I don't know.
Would you prefer it?
I, it's totally up to you. I'm fine with either, either way, whatever works for you guys. More quarms are better. More attendance is better.
6:30.
Looking into.
I don't, I don't.
Time to do it.
Well, will, will other participants have a problem with it?
The town people? I don't know. That, that, is that? Is there like something that over, like are all public things supposed to be at a certain time?
No, like plenty on zoning, our subcommittee, we, we meet at 5:30.
Okay.
EDC meets at 6 o'clock.
Okay. So you don't have to worry about that.
It's up to us.
Yeah, it's up to us. 6, 6:30, we'll do a half hour increment?
Yeah, why don't we go to 6:30 and then next year, if I'm still here, I'll push you again. So we're meeting at like.
Big step. Let's go 6:30. 6:30. Start next meeting? No, we got to do next year.
Start in January, right?
As soon as, I mean, as soon as you change your bylaws.
Oh, change it.
Well, we have to let the.
Okay, so now go on the bylaws, right?
Yeah, well, we'll change the bylaws first.
It'll be, it'll be for next year.
Yes, I would say yes.
The dates.
This will be scheduled with the Secretary of the State. It'll be starting in January.
Effective January.
Hold on it. Before that. So what if we were, so, okay, as far as the dates now, I mean, we don't really change much anyways.
No, it's kind of, it's kind of already set.